Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of March 4th, 2021. Per Executive Order 29-20, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, this meeting will be conducted entirely by teleconferencing. For the Brown Act, we have posted a notice of the meeting agenda 72 hours in advance. During the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, all of the planning commissioners will be participating in this meeting by teleconference. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in the meetings. This meeting will be held on a Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public may participate and provide comments by accessing the meeting online or by calling into the meeting. Instructions are included on the city's website and on today's agenda. So with that, I'd like to take a roll call. As I call your name, please indicate if you're present, Commissioner Austin. Commissioner Austin, I think you are muted.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. I went backwards. Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Boomhauer.
Present.
Commissioner Granowitz.
Present.
Commissioner Modain.
Present.
Commissioner Otsuji.
Present.
Vice Chairman Whalen.
Present.
And Chairman Hoffman is present. The staff members online with us today are Tim Daly from Development Services, Tate Galloway from the Planning Department, Tony Khalil, City Engineer, and Deputy City Attorney Corinne Neufur. So with that, I'd like to begin our agenda, and I'd like to start with anybody here who would like to speak on a non-agenda item. And if you would like to speak, please click the button that says Raise Your Hand, and I can see if there's any hands raised. And seeing as not, we'll we'll go on with our agenda. And the first item is the Consent Agenda. We have one item on consent, that's the 32nd and Broadway project. I do know that we received one email in support. No one to ask the Planning Commission first if there's anyone who would like to hear this item and take it off consent.
I do. We've had so much public comment, I think we have to open it up.
On item one?
Yes. No, sorry, I lie. My bad. Montezuma Residential.
Okay, this is 32nd and Broadway, and I think we've only gotten one comment, which is
Yeah, my bad.
No problem, no problem. Okay, so right now, I would like to open up to the public anybody who's here to speak on item one. Go ahead and raise your hand electronically. We have one speaker, Mr. Jim Jennings. And Jim, if you can go ahead and
I'm sorry, was item one the Montezuma project or the 32nd?
No, no, Montezuma is item two.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm here to speak on that project, my bad.
Okay. Okay, seeing as there's nobody here to speak on item number one, I will go ahead and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Whalen and a second by Commissioner Modain. And let's go ahead and take a vote. Commissioner Austin.
Aye.
Commissioner Boomhauer.
Aye.
Commissioner Granowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Modain.
Aye.
Commissioner Otsuji.
Aye.
Vice Chair Whalen.
Aye, and I just want to make a comment after the vote.
Chairman Hoffman is an aye. That passes unanimously, yes, Commissioner Whalen.
I want to compliment the applicant on the renderings, they're really good. It was easy to see what was in mind. And then, please take the acacia out, and I think you missed a stormwater alternative compliance opportunity, otherwise, great project.
Okay. So are there any directors' reports?
Actually, Chairman Hoffman, this is Tim Daly. Just want to point out that there are no items that are requested to be continued or withdrawn. I think we might have missed that portion of the hearing.
I knew that, and that's why I skipped over it. Okay.
And then I'll let Tate start off with the Planning Department, any announcements, and then I'll follow up.
Great, thanks, Tim. Tate Galloway, Program Manager with the Planning Department. I just want to remind everybody, especially those viewers, that March always brings up our annual elections for community planning groups. And while we do face certain challenges with COVID-19 in terms of being socially distanced, the planning groups are working very hard and diligently to try and address those issues, so I encourage everybody to, if they're interested, to participate in the community planning process, and you can go to the Planning Department's website and look under Community Planning for more information about your planning group and upcoming elections. Also want to mention that both on the Planning Department website, as well as the Development Services website, we do have a new feature about being informed, where you can get sign up via Constant Contact to receive notices for upcoming development projects, as well as agendas for community planning groups, even Planning Commission, Hearing Officer, and other city-related development and planning meetings, so it's a great resources. I encourage the commissioners, if you're interested, to also check that out if you haven't already. Finally, just wanted to talk about workshops. We are going to be having a workshop for the Mir Mesa Community Planning Group coming up. I know that was a topic of interest before. We are hearing an item on the college area, and I just wanted to let commissioners know that we don't have it scheduled, but we will be having a workshop on that community plan update as well. And then finally, just wanted to follow up on a previous workshop that we had for Bario Logan. There's a question about the demographics that Commissioner Granowitz had, and I do want to report back that we talked with the staff at Sandeg and found out the reason for the discrepancy between the numbers that we were showing was the difference between using census numbers and estimates, so well, we can explain more about that the next time we do talk about Bario Logan, but I did want to come back and just address that, so you know, we take your comments seriously and we look into them, so with that, I turn it over to Tim, thank you.
Thank you, Tate.
Thank you, Tate. Commissioners, I got some news coming out of Development Services, a couple items. Being on March the 1st, this past Monday, we introduced the next wave of online permits and plan review that make it easier for customers to apply for permits and utilize the full cloud-based software review plans using electronic plan review and conduct inspections. So some of the new online permit types that we're utilizing are for fire permits, which includes alarms, kitchen hoods, suppression system, except for single-family homes and duplexes, underground fire services, also revised residential rooftop-mounted solar photovoltaic permits, development permits, standalone without building permit, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits, signed permits, and construction changes related to the above new permit types. So that's exciting news as we're moving forward to more cloud-based. The second item I have also is on Tuesday this week. We have new curbside plan pickup services that we're offering. You'll be able to pick up paper plans conveniently using the department's new curbside plan pickup appointment service. To use the service, customers must first schedule an appointment online. Walk-up services previously available on our third-floor bridge will no longer be available. So all plant pickup services will be provided through the new curbside plan pickup service. And that's what I have, thank you.
Now that you brought that first item up, I have a quick question. It might be relevant to a lot of people listening, is what are the application payment options for people who are applying online?
When you're applying online, obviously, when you submit your application, we send you an invoice for that particular item, so the invoice we provided to the applicant, and then you can pay it online.
Thank you. All right, now we move to commission comment. If any comments, any commissioners have, just please raise your hand. Seeing none. We will go into our discussion items. And the first discussion item, item number two, Montezuma Residential CPA Initiation. Before we begin the staff report, I want to say a few words to everybody out there about this item. Before we begin, this is a request for the Planning Commission to initiate a community plan amendment. San Diego is not typical because the Planning Commission has to initiate the process, but in most every other city, any property owner can apply for a community or general plan amendment at any time. Secondly, the bar is not set very high to allow a property owner to go forward with the process. There are only three findings that have to be made. The request appears to be consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan and community plan. The amendment provides additional public benefit to the community as compared to the existing designation, and the public facilities appear to be available. Now here's the important part. There's no development proposal before us, only a request to initiate this amendment process. If we decide to initiate, we are not making any judgment on the ultimate project for either support or opposition. We will always reserve our right to review whatever project results from this, to either approve it or deny it. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. What you will hear today is our suggestions to staff of what issues we would like addressed for any future project, and that is what we'll hear today, so just wanted to make that very clear to everybody, and staff, if you could go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Hoffman. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nathan Cosman. I'm an associate planner with the Planning Department. The item before you today is a community plan amendment initiation for the college area city plan. Note, we do have 50 slides today, but I'll be moving through them rather quickly and succinctly. So again, the item is to initiate a community plan amendment to change the land use designation and allow mixed-use residential on a 1.86 acre site. This requires a redesignation from visitor commercial to a multifamily residential designation and removal of the community plan implementation overlay zone. I'll just explain the purpose a bit. Again, I'll reiterate, the purpose of the hearing isn't to discuss the details of a development proposal, but rather just to focus on the more fundamental question of whether the proposed change to the general plan and the community plan is worthy of further analysis based upon compliance with those three initiation criteria contained in the general plan, which we'll discuss a bit more later. So initiation is just a point of, first point of consideration by a decision-maker. It's a limited decision, it's neither an approval nor a denial of a subsequent plan amendment or a subsequent development proposal. And just to note, privately-initiated plan amendments are often presented without development proposals, so that applicants and staff can understand whether a potential project would warrant a change in the first place. So first, we'll show the site location and existing land uses. Here's a regional view of the site, the site's located in the eastern portion of the college area planning area, near where Montezuma Road and Alcoa Boulevard intersect. The address is 6650 Montezuma Road. It is a 1.86 acre site. The amendment site is shaded red in the center of the photo. It's where the former College Lutheran Church Building, which is now demolished, once stood. To the east of the site is the Ralph's Full Service Grocery Store. To the west is the College of Long Island Library, which shares 25 spaces with the subject site. And then you can see San Diego State University in the background, located just a little over a mile west of the site. Existing land uses, so there's a mix of single-family and multifamily residences located to the north and the west of the site. Commercial and multifamily uses are directly south and east of the subject site. Here are a couple photos. You can see the existing use of the site is vacant. South of the site are multifamily and commercial uses. And this is a view from the street looking northwest toward the library and multifamily residential uses that are west of the site. And here's a northeast view of the site, and you can see the adjacent Ralph's Grocery Store. Behind the site, along Mohawk Street, are both multifamily and single-family uses. In reviewing housing and demographic information between 2010 and 2019, the college area community planning area had a population increase of just under 15%. Just over 3,000 people. Over the same time period, total dwelling units in the community plan area increased by 6.7% to 490 units. Currently, there are 311 existing affordable housing units in college area. Now on to adopted plan land use and zoning. The college area city plan designates the 1.86 acre site as visitor commercial. The land use designation surrounding the site, aside from the library, allow residential uses ranging from low-density residential up to 10 dwelling units per acre to a general commercial designation that allows a residential of up to 110 dwelling units per acre. And that's here, Ralph's at the intersection of Alcoa Boulevard and Montezuma Road. On the south side of Montezuma Road, the plan allows up to 75 dwelling units per acre. The existing zoning on the site is CB11 with the Community Plan Implementation Overlay Zone that extends to the boundaries of the site, and that specifically restricts development to visitor accommodation uses not to exceed 125 hotel rooms and 125 parking spaces. I'm on to site mobility. The site is located approximately 0.7 miles away from the Alvarado Medical Center Green Line Trolley Station and one mile from the San Diego State University Transit Center. So this puts the site right outside of a transit priority area, which extends a half-mile around those stations. However, Sandeg, the site is within the Sandeg's growth area boundary because MTS Route 1 has peak headways 15 minutes between Fashion Valley Transit Center and La Mesa Boulevard Trolley Station. MTS Route 1 has south along Alcoa Boulevard at 67th Street, and it's within a five-minute walk of the site, and then in addition, Route 14 travels between the Grantville Trolley Station and Lake Murray Village Shopping Center in La Mesa, and has peak headways of one hour at the intersection of Montezuma Road and Reservoir Drive. In addition, Sandeg is exploring a next-generation rapid bus along Montezuma Road and a complete corridor concept along Alcoa Boulevard for the 2021 Regional Transportation Plan. So this shows the walk shed to parks. The site is within a five-to-10, 10-minute walk of Montezuma Park, the Language Academy Joint Use Park, and Harriet Tubman Joint Use Park. The site has been Complete Communities Mobility Choices Mobility Zone 3. For those that maybe don't know, Mobility Choices Regulations aim to reduce citywide vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, to address the environmental impacts of development related to noise, air pollution, greenhouse gas emissions, with talent enjoyment by investing in active transportation infrastructure and amenities that result in a greater reduction to that citywide VMT vehicle miles traveled. Development in Mobility Zone 3 should include VMT reduction measures totaling at least eight points or otherwise pay in active transportation in Lufy. So some examples of the VMT reduction measures include shade trees along pedestrian walkways, micro-mobility parking, transit stop upgrades, structure upgrades, and bike infrastructure that expands the planned regional bikeway network. As for the facilities that surround the site, the existing and planned bike network in college area includes Class 2 bike lanes on Montezuma Road between the site and San Diego State University, as well as Class 3 bike route along Alcoa Boulevard. As outlined in the staff report, the site is within close proximity to numerous public facilities. The site is within one mile of five different schools, a neighborhood park, and two joint-use parks, a fire station, hospital, and San Diego State University. The College of Long Island Library is next door to the site. So a little bit of background on the site, there was a community plan amendment adopted in 2019 to redesignate the site from low-medium density residential that allowed up to 15 dwelling units per acre, and also a general commercial on part of the site that allowed up to 110 dwelling units per acre with residential, and redesigned it to visitor commercial in order to construct a hotel on the site. During the 2019 amendment process, but critically separate from that development permit for the hotel, the city entered a shared parking agreement for the public use of 25 parking spaces for overflow library parking. And the shared parking agreement is in effect until December 2029, with two five-year extensions allowed, so possibly December 2039. And as I noted, this agreement is separate from the hotel. So the Planning Department is currently in the process of updating the college area community plan, targeting summer 2021 for land use concepts and alternatives. The focus of the plan update is to identify locations for additional housing capacity in the community, to increase public spaces and add amenities to existing public spaces in the community, and to strengthen active mobility connections to San Diego State University and to surrounding communities. Although we're still working on land use concepts, when we conducted a survey as part of the update, we asked participants to drop pins on a map and tell us exactly where they thought new housing should be located in the community. They overwhelmingly responded with pins along the corridors and the nodes, including a concentration where the subject site is located at the node of Montezuma Road and Alcoa Boulevard. So as for the proposed initiation, we appropriate use designation and the appropriate zoning, including removal or amendment of the Community Plan Implementation Overlay Zone in order to allow mixed-use multifamily development with the ground-floor commercial components. For this mixed-use multifamily development, the applicant is proposing to explore land use designations of both residential high, which allows up to 75 dwelling units per acre, and residential very high, which allows up to 110 dwelling units per acre. And these would allow between 84 and 202 units on the sites by land use designation. Currently, zero are allowed. The Community Planning Group recommendation, on January 10th, 2021, the college area community planning board voted 17-1-1 to continue this item until the applicant returns with a plan to address the parking and access issues on a permanent basis, rather than the joint use agreement currently in place, a plan to mitigate the impact of traffic on Sarnac and Mohawk Streets, and a community plan designation with lower density and height limitations. On page six of your staff report, several issues have been identified that require evaluation through the plan amendment review process if this amendment is initiated. So shared parking is one of those. Shared parking at the library for to identify measures that make spaces available to library patrons during library hours. Pedestrian and vehicular access from Montezuma Road will be evaluated to ensure that access to the shared driveway with the library, both during construction and after. Just to note, the library also has vehicular access at Mohawk Street behind the site. The appropriate density for the site will be evaluated. So residential land use options to consider include 45 to 75 dwelling units per acre, or 75 to 110 dwelling units per acre, and a corresponding zone will be selected to implement. In fact, the appropriate zone to implement both the land use density and appropriate height will be evaluated, so adjacent zones allow between 30 feet and 50 feet height. Current zoning on the site allows a maximum structure height of 60 feet. A community plan implementation overlay zone could also be used in conjunction with the RM410 zone to establish a height limit where one does not exist with that zone. Other site design considerations to evaluate further include bulk, scale, massing, and transitions. Also, the provision of amenities, including public space and pedestrian scale elements associated with the proposed development, as well as the provision of affordable housing, and any additions or modifications that the Planning Commission would suggest could also be incorporated to this list. As for general plan initiation criteria, as we noted, the city of San Diego general plan has established three criteria for plan amendment initiations. The first is consistency with the goals and policies of the general plan and the community plan. So the proposed amendment would help implement the community plan's commercial goal to provide a range of retail sales and service facilities to serve the community with a ground-floor commercial component. The proposed amendment would be consistent with community plan policy that recommends transition from higher-intensity commercial uses and lower-density residential and multifamily residential projects with affordable housing units on the site, near transit, near public facilities, near public spaces, retail, and services. Also helps implement the city of San Diego general plan, city, city of villages, growth strategy. The second criterion is additional public benefit. So the proposed amendment would benefit the community by providing additional housing opportunities, including affordable housing units in close proximity to San Diego State University and near transit during a time in which City Council has declared a housing state of emergency. And the third criterion is the availability of public facilities. So the college area community planning area is an urbanized community, and all necessary public services appear to be available. However, if the amendment to the community plan is initiated, an analysis of public services and facilities would be conducted with the review of the amendment. So staff's recommendation today is to approve the initiation of an amendment to the college area community plan. And again, although staff believes the proposed amendment meets the necessary criteria for initiation, staff hasn't fully reviewed the applicant's proposal yet. So therefore, by initiating this community plan amendment, neither staff nor Planning Commission is committed to recommend in favor or denial of the proposed amendment. This includes staff presentation, and we are available for comments and questions.
And Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I just want to mention that we also have Misty Jones, Library Director, available, as well as Barry Sloten with Real Estate Assets, if you have any questions as well.
Okay, thank you very much. If you could go ahead and stop sharing the screen. We'll get into clarification questions. Commissioner Austin.
Thank you. Yes, I just have a couple of questions. I saw the statistic you put up about the number of residential units that have been created in the area over a period of time, which was significantly less than the amount of population growth. I'm wondering if you have a statistic for the vacancy rate in that area? And then, for further clarification, the population growth, does that include or exclude the campus and student housing on campus? I'm curious how full-time enrollment impacts this statistic and whether the campus is keeping up by providing housing on-site. I don't know if you could answer those questions. So I'm just trying to get a better feel for what's happening, because I know that over the years that I've sat on this commission, a lot of folks have complained about the housing sort of crisis, and especially the, sort of the mini-dorm population that they have in that area. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner, I don't have a figure for vacancy. Yes, Commissioner, I I don't have a figure for vacancy at at the time, but that is something that that we could find and and provide for the planning commission. And the the population statistic that that we, population growth were Sandag estimates. And they they do include students living in in group quarters. So that would include students on campus.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, we can get that information to get you household population. The vacancy right now for twenty nineteen, according to the Sandag estimate, is five point five percent.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any other clarification questions? Yes, Commissioner Boom Howard.
Thank you. Um, so just so this is on the record, I have absolutely nothing to do with this current project. But I was the consultant that worked with the Lutheran denomination when college Lutheran closed and they were selling the property or trying to decide what to do with the property. So I'm glad someone from Real Estate Assets is is on this call because I know that a lot of the public comments have to do with with the shared parking agreement. What I'd like to ask is my my recollection is that the city actually had an option to purchase the the parking that was under the the original shared parking agreement with the church as a part of that transaction and elected not to take advantage of that. I just want to confirm that is a true statement.
Barry, can you please answer that question?
Uh, yes. Hi, this is Barry Sloten. I'm Program Manager with the Real Estate Assets Department. The answer to that question is is yes, we, the city did have an option to acquire the former church property next door to the library. At the time, we would have very much liked to have done it, but there was no funds available at the city to be able to enter into that transaction.
Okay, perfect.
I'd also like to make one other one other statement, a clarification to the staff report. The joint use agreement for the shared parking between the library and the adjoining property was a twenty-year agreement beginning in twenty nineteen, so it doesn't terminate until twenty thirty-nine with two potential five-year options afterwards. I just wanted to make that clarification to the slide I saw about the termination date.
I had one question.
Thank you. So just, I I just felt like that was important information for the other commissioners to have as part of this discussion. Because obviously the shared parking is is kind of a sticky wicket on this one, to use Chair Hoffman's term of art.
That was Commissioner Austin, but I appreciate it. Uh, thank you, Vice Chairman Waylon.
Uh, I I had a question for a city. Is is there a way to make these sorts of shared parking agreements permanent or are they always with a term? How's that work?
Well, this is Barry Sloten again. It it as far as the permanency of it, it is always going to be a negotiation between the city and the particular property owner. In this particular case, we don't own the adjacent property. And we were fortunate to be able to negotiate an agreement with the property owner to allow us the twenty-year agreement for the twenty-five shared spaces with potential two, five-year options after that. We cannot force anyone into an agreement like that, so we were grateful to be able to at least get that agreement in place. But to answer your question, there's that it's difficult to get a permanency in an agreement like that unless there is agreement on both sides.
Well, we'll wait to hear the testimony, but I think the public is interested in permanency, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Modine.
Um, I was wondering, because this is concurrent with the college area community plan update, what is the the timing for a rezone compared to the completion projected completion of the community plan update? Does anybody have an an answer to how long a rezone would take? You know, theoretically versus the community plan update and if they would be done at the same time or close? I don't know if I can get an answer to that.
Nathan, can you answer the first part of that question? When do you anticipate the plan update being finished?
Um, sure, absolutely. So we are anticipating a adoption of the plan update by council in early twenty twenty-three.
And then Tim, if you would wouldn't mind putting you on the spot on the typical time for processing a project with a reason and plan amendment?
Yeah, you know, if it's a standalone project with a associated with a resume, depends upon the complexities of what the project, if it needs like a site development permit or a plan development permit associated with the reason, obviously a community plan amendment. Typically, those take at least over a year to process, probably at least between a year and two years. And it's a city council decision as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, any other clarification questions? Seeing as none, then we'll go to the public testimony and I see a number of hands raised, but what I'd like to do is start out with the applicant. And if the applicant, if you could identify yourself first.
Yes, good morning. My name is Steve Bossy with the Atlantis Group. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, Steve, before you begin, I want to ask how long do you need for your presentation? What we're doing, the rules today will be seeing the number of speakers, we'll we'll allow three minutes per speaker, but you can do groups if you have people who want to give up their time. So so how much time do you need and do you have anybody to give up their time?
So so we we do have five people, including myself, seating seating times so that we can get the full fifteen minutes. We don't anticipate needing that full fifteen minutes. But we we do have a fairly thorough presentation and I'll try and breeze over some details because Mr. Cosman covered a lot of of what we are going to cover here as well.
Okay, could you identify those people?
Yes, it's Sophia Delmar English, who who is also a panelist and will be presenting with me today. Marcella Escobar X, who's also a panelist. Shaheen Edalaju, who's a property owner and also a panelist, and then Nafila Edalaju, who is also the property owner and a panelist here today.
Okay. I didn't see Marcella's name, but she is one of the speakers.
That's correct.
I'm here to respond to questions, Chairman Hoffman.
Okay, okay, you're there. Okay, then Steve, go ahead. You have fifteen minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. I am now sharing my screen and kick this off. So good morning, Chair Hoffman and Planning Commissioners. I'm here today to present a community plan amendment initiation request for six six five zero Montezuma Road. My name is Steve Bossy, and I will be presenting this CPA initiation today along with Sophia Delmar English from the JWDA Architectural Firm. I quickly want to present the project site, which is on the north side of Montezuma Road, east of College of Long to Library and west of the routes. The site is near the key intersection of Montezuma Road and Alcoa Home Boulevard, which will be further discussed later in this presentation. Most notably, it's located approximately a hundred feet outside of a tender priority area, so it is just over a half mile from the Alvarado Hospital Trolley Station. It's also within one-tenth of a mile of MTS bus routes, bus stops for routes one and fourteen. Montezuma Park is a half mile away and SDSU is a mile away from the project site. So here's some salient background on the site and the library located adjacent to the site to the west. A joint use agreement for shared parking between the project site and the library was recorded in December twenty nineteen. As highlighted in this excerpt from that agreement, it allows access to and shared use of twenty-five parking spaces. This agreement is good for thirty years as agreed upon with the city, and this agreement runs with the land regardless of ownership as requested by the community. This is exhibit B, as was included in the staff presentation. This is a part of the shared parking agreement and identifies the twenty-five shared parking spaces. I should emphasize that the spaces and access to them are being incorporated into the new site planning efforts. We feel that the parking issue has been addressed, but we have also engaged in discussions with the friends of the library and will resolve whatever issues we can. The community plan was amended and the site was rezoned in June twenty nineteen to allow for a hotel. As I'm sure you all are aware and and the market has has told us, the the hotel market has been one of the hardest-hit industries during the pandemic and financing is almost non-existent these days for hotel product. At the same time, we have a housing crisis and a housing emergency in the city of San Diego, so the ownership is transitioning to look at housing development on this site. Today's request includes a land use designation of multifamily residential, which allows for density ranging from forty-five to one hundred and ten dwelling units per acre. This is the figure in the current college area community plan, which shows the current land use designation, and the site would be re-designated from visitor commercial to the multifamily residential forty-five to one hundred and ten dwelling units per acre land use designation. It should be noted that the general commercial with residential land use designation is located all along the Alcoa Home Boulevard corridor, and this site is adjacent to sites along that corridor, and the requested land use designation change would be consistent with that adjacent density. The CPA initiation was presented to the college area community at three separate meetings. In January, the college area project review committee moved to continue the item and have the applicant return with more project details. In February, the applicant returned with more project details, such as the massing model, which will be included later in this presentation, and the group voted seven to one to deny the item citing concerns about the library parking, the density, and the height. And as included in the staff presentation, the applicant presented the full community planning board on February ten. The group voted to continue the item and have the applicant return with a permanent solution to the library parking issue, a traffic impact analysis, and a designation with lower density and height limitations. Notably, the College Area Community Council prepared a community plan update report, which includes visions and guiding principles, a couple of which are shown in the excerpts here. The Alcoa Home Boulevard and Montezuma Road intersection is identified as one of three major nodes in the community. The Montezuma Road is identified as a major corridor with opportunities for dynamic mixed-use corridor and including a promenade and enhanced landscaping. The specific principles included in this report call for adding density along the major corridors and at the nodes. The report also specifically calls for a cluster of six-to-eight-story mixed-use buildings at the Alcoa Home Boulevard and Montezuma Road node. And we feel that this requested amendment and the preliminary project concept prepared thus far are designed to implement this vision. So while there is no specific development proposal being presented today as a part of this CPA initiation, we would like to share the building block schematic and project concept to give a feel for the general scope. The project concept includes two hundred and sixty total dwelling units. It would include nineteen very low-income units and two hundred and forty-one market rate units. The approximate height would be eighty feet. Parking is anticipated to be provided in one level below grade and one and a half levels above grade. The ground floor of the project would be activated with commercial use along the Montezuma Road frontage. Also, along the Montezuma Road frontage, frontage would be a widened sidewalk, promenade, and enhanced landscaping. The unit mix would include studios, one bedrooms, and two bedrooms. The residential market would be community-driven, including undergrad students, grad students, and faculty. And now I will hand it over to Sophia Delmar English from the architecture team to share the project concept.
Thank you, Steve. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sophia Delmar English, Project Manager at JWDA, Joseph Long Design Associates. At the request of the planning group, we prepared a concept mapping study. So what we have today are some inspiration images and a preliminary mapping model of the structure. A more complete, a more complete project design will be prepared and submitted under a development permit during the next steps of the amendment process. Here on the screen, you'll see our conceptual site plan. Our goal is really to create a dynamic, fully functioning community plaza, creating a small mixed-use node, taking note of the ongoing visioning exercises and initial plan for the college area community plan. You know, we're considering this a place where neighbors walk and grab a coffee or food, folks just sit and have lunch with friends and neighbors, really trying to create a sense of of place. The concept site plan shows various design components that we'll touch on shortly in the next few slides. But quickly, I wanted to point out a few notes. Call out one and two, it is our intention to add landscaping around the site to enhance the ground-level experience to have a connection to nature. Call out two, what we're calling our California Living Room is a public plaza to create indoor-outdoor experience for all. Call out four, residential upper-level outdoor terraces. In our in our concept design, we have resident outdoor terraces that face the west, south, and east to 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 not impact the single-family homes to the north. Main access to the site is from Montezuma Road, where we show the location of the twenty-five library shared parking spaces. Commercial spaces are to be fully parked and will not rely on the library parking to get to the minimum spaces required. Next slide. Here you'll see some images for, you know, the neighborhood experience we would try to evoke. Really trying to embrace the idea of this California living room, a flexible space for all to hang out, taking advantage of the wonderful San Diego weather. A space to get to know your neighbor, a space for folks to connect, really trying to create an engaging atmosphere to draw people out of their homes and connect to one another. Again, a space for place-making, informal gathering spaces, mobile furniture, and a neighborhood feel. Next slide. Here is just some additional images for the look and feel of the commercial and retail spaces. The aesthetic to evoke energy and brightness, light colors and textures will have inset entryways, various styles of windows, doors to activate street to create interest, using contrasts of dark brown details with white light colors, noting a bit of sophistication. Again, making a space more active, transparent, and engaging, and, you know, creating some of these neighborhood dining patios. Next slide. Here's some images for the look and feel of the architecture and form. Our initial thoughts of volume are to set floors where possible to create visual depth and interest. Building facades that face the single-family homes will be looked at step-massing where possible. East and west facade to be thought through as those will be primary views looking east and west on Montezuma and Alcoa Home Boulevard. Lighter tones for a fresh look, color blocking with metal panels, metal frame accents to highlight broken-up volume, glass for transparency, and then obviously color to color to be chosen wisely. Again, creating a light volume, our installations with with the potential of murals during durable materials and and pops of color. Next slide. Here you'll see the enlarged level plan. Call out one is, you know, the California living room. Various seating arrangements, covered areas to create connection with retail community space, deep inset street frontage to create the public space. Call out two, enhanced pedestrian paving throughout the site to create dynamic patterns with the use of color and material. Call out three, use of cities suggests with jacquard and the trees which can plain to light natural color tones of the building. Additions of raised planters for greenery and vegetation will be considered. Call out four, our initial thought to have a water feature and art sculpture to have a central focal piece to tie the space together, creating another type of gathering space for the neighborhood. Lastly, you'll you'll note this year, the location this year and commercial parking in close proximity to their respective buildings and uses. Call out. Uh, next slide. On the screen, you'll see our seven-story conceptual massing mall that faces Montezuma. The main resident amenity that faces the busy street to not impact neighbors with noise or light. Call out one, the art wall, the west facade that faces the library could have an art wall to enrich the facade where parking would be located, taking into account what the public will see once exiting the library. Looking at all the other images for calls two through six, is our intent to create a small neighborhood node, having an indoor-outdoor feel, flexible seating spaces for groups or individuals for the community to gather. Essential focal point to tie the space together, design details for covered spaces to elevate the frontage and spaces. Addition of canopy trees for shade and to add color, pedestrian enhancements continuing the connection to SDSU to the west. All designated details are are to create a sense of place, street presence and activation along Montezuma. As we further design in the next steps, we'll involve the community in the in the design process so the design meets their needs. With that, thank you. With that, thank you commissioners for your time and I'll turn it back over to Steve Fossey to conclude our presentation.
Yes, and and this, this concludes our presentation. I want to make everyone aware that Marcella Escobar Eck from the Atlantis Group and Shaheen and Masila Edilaju are here and available for questions. So with that, we respectfully request that the planning commission approve this CPA initiation request. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go on. We have one group presentation. And that is the presenters, I understand, are Julie Hamilton, Joan Reese and John Hensman. And if one of you could let me know the other people who are ceding time and how much time you'll need.
Uh, yes, this is Julie Hamilton. I am speaking on behalf of myself. The other, we need fifteen minutes. We have a list of eight people, but we'll start with three because I don't think that we need any more than that. Laura, Laurel Brunel, Gary DeBachieri and Christine. I'm sorry, Christine Maruni. Hopefully they're on. If not, we can go on down the list. Some of our people have had trouble signing in.
Okay, I see Christine. I see Gary.
What about Judy Swink or Richard Burkett?
Okay.
I have a list of eight people, so.
I know. It's not gonna be a problem. Yes, I see them. So yeah, we're good. You'll have fifteen minutes.
Right, I will.
Beginning when you share your screen and start.
We are not gonna, I'm not gonna share my screen, mainly because the pretty pictures are lovely. But we all know that the pretty pictures really don't relate to the initiation of a community plan amendment.
Okay, your time is starting now.
Great, thank you. I am actually speaking on behalf of myself as a resident of the college area. I'm also participating on the community plan update committee, but I'm not speaking on behalf of that committee. And I think that this community has actually moved forward and is willing to accept density unlike many other communities. Our issue is that this density is too high. And like I said, the pretty pictures are lovely, but that is no representation of what will actually occur when the project is built. Initiating a community plan amendment that is essentially tracking with a community plan update is really a sign of poor planning. The community plan amendment is taking land use in isolation and not considering all the other aspects of comprehensive planning that we need to see. One of your findings is to find that there is a public benefit. Yeah, there is a public benefit to housing, but we, do we want density for density's sake? What we really need in this area are parks. Are we, is real estate assets going to purchase this property for a park? Probably not, although it would be ideal. The reality is that we are continuing to add density in our community and we are severely park deficient. Much was made of Montezuma Park being just a, a short walk away, and that's correct. Montezuma Park is one point five acres. It is a tiny pocket park. In this community, we have less than ten acres of park and it's one point five acre pocket park and three joint use fields. We currently have twenty-two thousand seven hundred residents and I'm not sure if you got it clearly. The per, the student population that does not live on campus is unaccounted for. It's unaccounted for because it's very hard to know how many students are living in the houses and because students register at their permanent addresses. They don't register at the homes they live in while here. So we have. We need sixty-six acres of parks. We have somewhere in the neighborhood of eight point eight. We continue to add density with no consideration of the fact that we can't meet our public service demands. We also have a severe problem with policing. There are nine officers, officers in the eastern area at any given time. It is the lowest staff division in the entire community. Response times, unless there is a life-threatening emergency, are more than several hours. The only time I got a decent response time in calling the police in my neighborhood was when somebody got shot three doors down after going to a big student party. It wasn't twenty-eight minutes, but it was better than a typical response time. We don't have adequate police service. We talk about vehicle miles traveled and vehicle miles traveled is an important metric. And this community actually does lend itself to transit-oriented development. We have great restaurants. You can have any kind of food in walking distance. We have a hospital. We have commercial. We don't have an employment center. The employment center, San Diego State, those employees don't live in the community. They choose not to live in the community and to say that they're going to market studio one and two-bedroom units with no amenities to faculty is disingenuous. Faculty is not gonna live in a complex like that. What we have is a population that travels to get to their employment. And we have to consider that in making any decision related to this community. To travel to the four major destinations founded during the community update process by transit is at least an hour each direction. It's an hour and four minutes downtown by trolley. It's an hour and four, five minutes downtown by bus. It's an hour to the Fashion Valley Transit Center. It's an hour and forty minutes to Serrano Valley. It's an hour and thirty minutes to Kearney Mesa. It's unrealistic to believe that people are going to travel. Jim, who are you talking to? It's unrealistic to believe that people are going to travel to, not going, they're going to travel by transit to any of these locations and active commuting. I'm a cyclist. My fiance rode from, from our home to UCSD. And he was strong and fast and it took him an hour and a half. So are you in a position or are the residents of this facility or the residents of this community in a position where they can add an extra two hours to their commute to travel by transit or for active commuting? It's not realistic. We have to look at bigger solutions to what's happening up here. Hopefully the update will do that, but we can't rely on faulty assumptions. This project may benefit the community, but not at plan initiation of very high density. It may benefit the community, but not without addressing parks, libraries, police, travel. The two little streets that are behind this project have single-family residences. I know all the super secret spy routes as we all do when we drive. And those two little streets are gonna be where people, what people use to travel. I would ask this commission to direct the applicant to go back and wait or process through the update. If they're going to come forward to initiate a community plan amendment, they need to have some ideas of how they're going to serve the significant public service issues related to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, is that everything or did you have other speakers?
I have two other speakers. I'm sorry, I went off the screen that had the list. I believe it's Joan and Jan.
That's who I have. And but this is all part of your group presentation.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Joan or Jan, either one, if you're ready. Joan, Joan Reese?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I am Jan. I am, Joan was intended to be here. She is the president of the Friends of the San Diego City Library, the corporate library. If she's not here, I will take her minutes.
Okay, you're on.
I'm going to first redo my, my prepared thoughts. And then I've got about a lot of energy for my non-prepared thoughts in terms of what's, what's happening. It's so difficult for our community to relate to this body in, because we don't know the rules, we haven't practiced. I tried to figure out how to get screening time and I was totally blocked in that. So we don't have pretty pictures. We don't even have ugly pictures, but I've got a lot of energy. So may I begin?
You've already begun.
Okay, thank you. So what's facing you today? On one side, you have a community that's convinced its library presents an essential service and must be protected. On the other side, you have a developer asserting his property rights toward fulfilling a good purpose. So how does this get resolved? And it's been our experience that it will not be resolved unless the city stands up and faces the problem that it has and finds a way to solve it. And in asking you and asking the community and asking the developer to keep, keep kicking this can down the road is a disservice to everybody. And, okay, it's obvious that both sides are resolute and growing more so as the years pass. And yes, it has been years. It was twenty sixteen when this problem of overlapping uses was discovered. So where's the city been for five years? It's hiding. So why does the community care so much about the library? We see our library as the doorway to a better future. Libraries are an invitation to the community to do better. A beautiful new library is a message to the community. Be well and prosper. We care. Here's the library. Inside are the tools for you to grow and thrive. So why are branches even important? The city knows that you must meet people where they are. The tools a library offers have to be accessible. Tools that you lock away somewhere are a wasted investment. So now we're talking about access, but we're not talking about roads and parkings exclusively. We're talking much more. We're talking about outreach. Easy access to the library's tools is the central purpose of a branch library. If you deny that, you're working at cross purposes to that branch's central function. So what evidence can we provide of that? The city spends money on library parking. This, the city provided tons of expensive underground parking for its new central library. Just last twenty nineteen, the city provided eighty-five underground parking spaces for its newest branch library serving Mission Hills and Hillcrest. The cost of that branch, eighteen million dollars. Access isn't a luxury. It's essential. How much parking is provided for us on city property? Twenty-eight spaces. The rest, thirty spaces are on property the city does not own or control. The city can't even protect the driveway into the library. That live, that driveway was closed off for an entire year of twenty seventeen while this, while the community and the owner attempted to negotiate access. The, okay, um, I suggest that we pull up some of the, the slides that others have presented and look at the city property boundary. That's what the city has and, and that's not what it needs for its library. The report before you success, suggests that the access problem has already been solved. It's been solved with a joint use agreement. That's, solution just does not work. You can't find what I need to tell you today about the library in this report that you've just seen and in what the developer presented. We have only fractured bare minutes to tell our story. So what's important in the story? Debunking the myth that joint use is the only solution. We find that joint use is no solution at all. Why isn't it a solution? Because each side requires intensive use of the driveway and the parking. A joint use in this solution is based, in this situation, is based on the false premise that the shared use of a very scarce resource is even doable. And it's, it's rendered less possible when one party has two hands, property rights and the outsized need of a high, high-density residential use. And you have the city with its hands tied behind her back without property rights. Yes, a joint use has been fashioned. It was conceived under the conditions that the development would be a hotel and the hotel uses would be compatible with library uses. That was twenty nineteen. The community and the developer had hopes that it would work. In fact, the library supporters also had hopes and, and approved of the initiation of that community plan change. The community, but today we learn that the conditions have changed and we agree they have changed. Very high-density housing is now on the table and that just won't work for the library unless, unless the city can secure permanent right of access and a permanent exclusive right to a sizable area for parking. We don't have that in the current joint use agreement. Again, just to ma, if you take a look at the aerial, one of the aerial photos presented today and just imagine this eight-story something apartment building jammed up against a little bit of parking when there's no parking on the street in front of that big unit. There's no parking of, of any substance behind it. There's only the little bitty street parking in front of the driveway. And that, the agreement. Let me find my place here. Okay. The agreement protects the owner, not the city. The agreement is revocable and it's so complex that if the city blinks once, it can be voided. And the city's left without any access to the library from Montezuma. That street goes away and it's left without, without any chance of using that parking. How can a community agree with the city that it's okay to put up the barriers that will close off our library? You can't solve this problem. We can't solve this problem. The developer can't solve this problem. You can add your voice to the community, to library supporters, to the, to the community planning board. Our hair is on fire. Our red lights are flashing. And we've waited for five years to get to a solution and we just get further behind every single step. How does it serve the community's interests to, the city's interests to look away from this problem and say, well, we'll take care of that later down the line? Look at Ash Street. Look at one-ten Ash Street. Does ignoring a problem really ever solve it?
We just wanna remind you, you have about thirty seconds left.
I'm done. Thank you.
Oh, no, I didn't mean to stop you, but thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to some of our other speakers here. The next one will be Richard Burkitt. Yeah, thank you, Richard. Before you begin, just a reminder to all speakers, it's a max at three minutes and I'm, I'm pretty strict about it, so please go ahead.
I'm here to donate my time to the Friends of the Library. That's all.
Thank you. Joe Felton?
Yes, good morning. My name is Joe Felton. I'm a twelve-year resident of Rolanda Village. I'm here today because I'm very concerned about permanent access to the College Rolanda Library from Montezuma. To drive around Ralph's to the Mohawk entrance is not trivial. The journey can take a long time, especially if you hit both the red lights there. I'm here also additionally to oppose CPA for very high-density housing. A CPA for very high-density housing at the Montezuma site would allow for more student housing. College enrollments in California have been flat over the past ten years. And unfortunately, SDSU has no plans to increase enrollment as there is no more capacity. If you ride your bicycle along Montezuma, you will notice a large apartment complex nearing completion right on the edge of campus. Viva, as it is known, is taking the place of some old dilapidated buildings, a welcome change. Further down Montezuma, the foundation is being dug for a new development right next to the recent Zuma apartment. Besides these improvements, you will also notice many banners and yard signs advertising now leasing on large apartments, small apartments and houses. If you go online to look for student housing, there is certainly no shortage. Go to the Boulevard sixty-three website and a large coupon for five hundred dollars pops up. A little later, a chat bubble pops up with an offer to get one hundred dollars cash if you sign a lease. Boulevard sixty-three is a large four-story complex that has presented a Boulevard 63 is a large four-story complex that has presented a host of problems, from neighborhood parking to a student falling off a balcony to his death. Contrast Boulevard 63 with another complex that was developed around the same time right across the street, Mesa Commons. Mesa Commons is a two-story development, provides apartments for low-income families. The development also includes single-family houses. There's currently a waitlist for Mesa Commons. These have been good neighbors and a welcome addition to our community. It is obvious that what our community needs is more affordable family housing and not more student housing. I oppose a CPA for very high-density housing because this is not what the community needs. We cannot risk losing access to our library over the CPA. I respectfully request denial of the CPA initiation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe. The next speaker is Paul Bailey.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Paul.
Okay, thank you. I'll be brief. I'm speaking, I'm a library user, Rolando resident. And I'm going to urge that, that no action be taken at all until we solve the parking problem because we do need dedicated parking. When we had shared parking with a church neighbor, that was fine because we didn't use the lot at the same time generally and, and a motel would have worked the same way. But now, we all know that when you put, plunk a high-density residential facility in a neighborhood, it sops up all the available parking. You have cars practically in the trees. There's not an inch of curb space anyplace. So to, to say that you've solved the problem with a, with a shared parking arrangement, which by the way was negotiated when they were contemplating a motel, that's just not going to work. And I hope the city will just sit down and do what they have to do to give us some dedicated parking. Also, I had a couple of questions. Will the residents pay for their parking places? Is that contemplated? Or as it turned out in Boulevard 63, if they didn't have to pay, of course, they wouldn't. They'd use the street. And also, will there be a limit on the residents, on the occupants' residents per unit? Which, without that, the, the number of car, people in cars would just swell kind of uncontrollably. So that's pretty much what I had to say and thank you.
Okay, Paul, thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Montana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you commissioners for this, taking this opportunity for me to speak. My name is Robert Montana. I've been a 30-year resident of the college area, served for many, many years on the college area community planning board, and I'm currently serving as the chair of the College Area Community Plan Update Committee, working hand-in-hand with Nathan and, and Mr. Galloway. But I'm speaking here today as a private citizen on my own, and I'm recommending that we, that your board do not re, initiate this plan amendment as a private action. As Commissioner Austin asked appropriately, what's the impact of SDSU students on the residential demand in our neighborhood? And we, as a group, as a committee, we're working with SDSU and they've committed to us to give us answers to those kinds of questions. But that question can't be answered or, I'm not sure that SDSU would participate as directly with a private individual asking the same kinds of questions. And it just seems kind of redundant and confusing to have two different groups asking SDSU for the same kinds of information. I'd also like to say that a private plan amendment, at the same time that the community's updating the plan, is poor planning because it's going to add confusion, it's going to distract from our efforts. The, the same kinds of issues, same kinds of questions will be posed, it'll be redundant, it'll add to your workload as a commission, add to the workload of city staff, and quite frankly, take time, energy and money away from the developer when that person could be participating fully in the plan update that we're undertaking. As Commissioner Moden asked, what's the timing of the two? And the response back from city staff was basically the same. A private amendment is going to take 12 to 24 months and the plan update is scheduled to be completed in about 24 months. So it's really inefficient and nonsensical to pursue a private plan amendment at the same time that the community is doing an update. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for giving me time. I hope you deny this request.
Thank you, Robert. Jim Jennings. You're our next speaker.
Good morning. As you said, my name is Jim Jennings. I am the Project Review Committee Chair and the Vice Chair of the College Area Community. The board and the community oppose the initiation of the community plan amendment as requested because of density and the height limit are too high. The community recognizes something will be built on this site. We've asked the developer to come back with a planned designation at lower density and lower height limit. We also asked the developer to suggest solutions for increased traffic on the si, on the side streets and provide a permanent access to the parking for the library. The developer and the city had already set this matter for a hearing before the community plan took action, showing little interest and input from the community. We therefore ask that, the area council is asking for you to deny the applicant's request. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. And the next speaker is Christina Boyd.
My name is Christina Boyd and I've been a resident of the College Area East for 20 years. My main concern, I'll be really short, is dedicated parking for the library. And right now, we have, I think Julie mentioned thousands of residents and actually, when I last looked, we had about 15 parking spaces, including several for handicap. So the concern is for staff, for residents, and also the density issue. I was a census worker last year for this area. I think some of the stats you presented in terms of density is way underrated. We have hundreds of units off of alleys with no yards, just right off the alley, no setbacks or anything. So I do question, I do believe the density is much higher than what's been reported at this meeting. Again, I encourage that the property owner look at giving us designated parking space, the city work with them. If it means buying some of the property, then I certainly support the city to do so to remediate an issue that came up several years ago through no fault of our community and where we lie on our public servants to serve us. And I am asking you to serve this community and to guarantee some parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Cara Camden.
Good morning, commissioners, friends, neighbors and citizens. Welcome to our library, a magnificent place where education and innovation find a safe space. A world expands before our eyes, the power of books helping futures to rise. Storytimes, children gain a voice. Elections, communities vote their choice. Access for all, incomes high and low. Through equity, the poorest find resources to grow. The unsheltered, the abused, the meekest of all. Our library, a sanctuary for those who feel small. Music, computers, puppet shows to see. Art, science, creating for free. It doesn't matter how young or old. The library's here if you're tired and cold. It doesn't matter where you live. The library's here with knowledge to give. Commissioners, today you have power. Today, make a choice. Protect our library and all will rejoice. And my four-year-old daughter says, just say please, mama. Say please, and maybe they'll protect our library. Thank you.
Thank you. Kent Fisher.
Yes, I am a resident of the College US States and have been for over a decade now. I'm a licensed real estate broker and a licensed general contractor. The city's already paid for the parking situation at the, at the, the library. It would only cost more funds from the city to, to change the parking situation. Adding a very high-density dwelling unit there would also cause Mohawk Street to be completely packed with cars and all the surrounding streets around it. Clearly, this is just an attempt to add more, to, to change the designation of the property from what was already agreed upon into something else, and it just increases the amount of density. With that, I defer the remainder of my time to the friends of, of the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva Yakutis.
Good morning. Thank you so much and thank you all for your service to the city of San Diego. My name is Eva Yakutis. I live in the college area. I also serve on the college area planning board and I'm here representing myself and obviously the, the, the planning board is also, shares my opinion. I would oppose the CPA for high-density housing and really agree with all the other comments that have been made. It's really not a NIMBY issue. It's really about providing the permanent and dedicated parking for use of library patrons. It's a wonderful city asset, neighborhood asset that serves the community as opposed to, you know, students, SDSU that are, are, will be here just for a short period of time. And I really feel I'm a fairly new resident here, but it sounds like the city of Rivers, or city of San Diego sort of dropped the ball at some point in planning for the, the, ingress and egress from the property as well as the parking, and that really needs to be rectified. We are in a housing emergency, but I don't see this as doing anything but damage to the neighborhood, the density and it's, at a certain extent with the traffic, et cetera. But it, for me, it really comes down to permanent dedicated parking for the library. I think that's really important for the community and for the city of San Diego and this wonderful relatively young library. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rhiel Levine.
Thank you, commissioners. My name's Ariel Levine and I'm a 10-year resident of the college area community. I also have two young children in second and third grade who use the library very frequently and it's a very valuable asset to our community. I recall one of the commissioners early saying that a condition of initiation of an amendment of the sort was that it would provide additional public benefit to the community. And in my mind, this does not provide additional public benefit to the community. One of the most important assets to our community is our library. And when we didn't have the ability to park there during the transition and ownership, it was extremely hard to access the library. It was, it made it to the point where it was, you know, sometimes you reconsidered whether you wanted to go pick up books for your kids because you had to fight parking. Having a joint use agreement right now is working because there's nothing in the property and it worked very well during the period of time where we were sharing with a church that used the parking primarily on a Sunday when the library was closed. If we have a high-end city unit building there that's using parking full-time with commercial businesses on the first floor that are using it during daytime hours, that's going to mean there's no parking available for the library and that we're going to be fighting for the, fighting even for the, the designated spots for the library that are probably going to be used by local residents or by people trying to access the build, the, the businesses. So I'm, I'm very concerned about this and I think parking for the library really needs to be a priority because it's such an important resource for our community. An additional concern that I do have as well that's been mentioned is the additional traffic that's going to happen on Serenac and Mohawk, Serenac and Mohawk Street. We don't always park at the library. Me and my kids, sometimes we bike there. But Serenac is already a, a challenging street to bike on with young children because of the traffic. It's used frequently as a cut-through for a lot of people to avoid traffic on El Cajon. If we have a high-density facility located in this location, it's going to be used even more frequently. And it's already nerve-wracking for me to bike on this. It will be more so in the future. And so, you know, I, I think if development's going to happen here, it needs to be done keeping these in mind. I think, you know, a low to medium-density facility would serve the community, the, the needs of the community much, much better than a high-density residential facility. And parking needs to be, parking is critical. That's the prime, primarily what I have to say and I'll see the remainder of my time.
Thank you, Ariel. The next speaker is a phone number and I'd like you to identify yourself when you get on, ending in 7012. Again, this is a phone number. If you have a phone number and you're waiting to speak, ending in 7012, that would be your cue to start.
Good morning. My name is Ron Wolf. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you. I'm a resident of over 25 years, as well as having worked in the neighborhood delivering pizzas since 1990 off and on. A high-density proposal like this just creates more traffic and as a disabled veteran denies me access to use the library for myself, my children and my grandchildren when they come to visit. Without some kind of permanent parking availability, I am dead-set against this. There are three other veterans in close proximity to where I live and I will be sure to get them online the next time this meeting comes up. That's all I had to say and I will see the rest of my time to supporters of the library.
Okay, thank you very much, Ron. The next speaker is Joan Reese.
Thank you. As president of the Friends of the San Diego Public Library, I really appreciate this opportunity to talk about something I'm passionate about, the importance of libraries to our community. Our organization looks at the big picture for our libraries here in San Diego. And we are especially interested in doing all we can to promote equity and access to library services and programs in all of the communities that our libraries serve. We know that library users of all ages and walks of life depend on the library for educational resources, employment assistance, enrichment programs, access to computers and the internet as a safe haven, cool zone, community gathering place and more. Only 15 and a half years old, the College Rolando Branch Library opened in 2005 as a beautiful new 15,000-square-foot state-of-the-art library, one of the first built as part of the city's libraries for the 21st century initiative. Nine years later, in 2016, this library was living up to its promises, a busy branch library with typical monthly statistics, including circulation of almost 17,000 items checked out, over 15,000 patron visits and 24 children's programs serving hundreds. Following the closure of the parking lot in mid-December 2016, library use, programs and circulations all plummeted, such that seven months later, they were down by up to In comparison, during that same period of time, service levels were maintained at similar branch libraries. Following that long year of parking lot closure, a joint use agreement provided re-access to parking, allowing community members to once again take better advantage of the library's resources, just as people in other neighborhoods across the city are able to access their local branch libraries. If the adjacent property is allowed to be developed as requested without ensuring an enforceable solution that provides dedicated parking for library users, there will be drastic repercussions in terms of community members' access to and benefit from the library. College and Rolando-area residents, from children and families to seniors, will be denied equitable library services in their community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joan. The next speaker is Kirsty Wilson.
Hi, thank you very much.
Hi, thank you very much, Chairman. My name is Kirsty Wilson, and I'm a mom and a resident in Rolando. I am personally impacted by the library when it was closed down, I believe it was a few years ago, and they denied access from Montezuma. I have a son who is currently five, and I have one that is also six months old right now. But when it was closed down, we couldn't allow access via Montezuma. There were many times where I couldn't find parking to get to the library. And to park farther away to access programs does not work for me as a mom who had little kiddos. The idea of trying to continue to shuffle the six-month-old, the five-year-old against traffic, if I park farther away to access the programs, the children's programs, is a problem. There was a few times when the access was denied that I couldn't find a place to park, and my son and I had to choose a different activity for that day. So I know that other parents were absolutely impacted. It's not that I arrived late. I arrived early for those items, for those children's programs, and we couldn't get to it. And I was part of the problem. Well, when the, the program participation plummeted, I was part of that number, unfortunately. We chose other branches instead. Other things to note is that we need that parking in general. I know that the library staff needs a place to park, and other people subsequently need to find places to be able to park. So I'm against the high-density program. And the, the library access parking needs to be solidified, not a joint-use agreement, but parking space is dedicated only to the library for this to continue is where I'm at. So I am against this high-density project.
Okay, thank you, Kirsty, and great job of speaking and handling your little baby at the same time.
Yep, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Amy Soto.
Hello, good morning. My name is Amy Soto, and I am a homeowner and resident of the College Area community. I have two young children, eight and 12, who are avid users of the library, as are our neighborhood friends. We're here to stand with and support the College Rolando Library, the library employees, and the community that our library serves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sue Richardson. Yes.
Okay, thanks. Hi, my name's Susan Richardson. I'm a 30-year resident of the College Area. We are now college-age children, grew up in the area, and participated in park programs and the library. I just wanted to confirm that you received my written comments against the initiation of the Community Plan Amendment that was sent earlier this week. I'm against the request for very high density, but are, is in favor, I'm in favor of a lower density that's more appropriate with the size of the, the buildings in the area and the apartments that are currently being built and mostly student housing. I also wanted to just make a request that you continue to hold your meetings via Zoom even when you go back in person, because I'm at work right now, and I never have access to being able to participate in public meetings that are held during the day. So I really hope that this ability for community access continues once we're able to go back in person. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very good point. Next speaker, Sherry Flowers.
Hi, my name's Sherry, and I've been living in Rolando for about 10 years now. I started here as a student, actually living in high-density apartments across the street from the library, if you're familiar. They're called The Diplomat, and that they're at the T-intersection of Montezuma and Reservoir Drive. And I can attest firsthand to, you know, the bottleneck that high-density apartments impose on the surrounding areas, because oftentimes, you know, we're bunking four students to an apartment, and we're only allotted two spaces in the parking structure. So the overflow goes to the streets below and mostly Reservoir. And Reservoir Drive itself is on, you know, the western corner of the library, and it is a dangerous intersection as it is. People come speeding up it to make the green light to turn left on to Montezuma. And I've personally witnessed several people crossing the street to get to their cars down Reservoir, be hit by cars while they're in the crosswalk. So it presents a danger. And I know we, it's presented as a solution, but I personally have been looking for senior housing for my elderly 85-year-old father for three years now in San Diego, and all the waitlists are closed. So I think we need to focus on the target demographics here. If we're going to address the housing solutions, and it is for seniors and low-income housing. So I would just ask you to leave the agreement as is or to change it back to low-density until a viable solution is presented. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. The next and last speaker is Rachel Lang.
Hi, I'm calling in support of this project. This is the perfect place for housing. It's desperately needed in the San Diego State area, as you've seen from all the mini-dorms in the area. Obviously, there needs to be more housing. Furthermore, I, I keep hearing all these people calling in about parking for the library, and this, this project has 25 spaces that are going to be maintained in perpetuity for 30 years. And I can't understand why anyone would place storage for vehicles over the, the need for humans to have housing. It just doesn't make any sense. We need a place for people to live. We'll figure out the parking for, for anything over 30 spaces for the library. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I spoke too soon. Another hand just raised. Troy Murphy.
Can you hear me? Oh, good. Um, yes, my name is Troy Murphy. I live in the College Area. I am a 20-year resident, a member of the College Area Community Planning Board, and co-chair of the Mather Colony Community Group, which is, in which the project is located. I am speaking as an individual, not on behalf of either of these groups. I submitted some figures, and I don't know if the commissioners had an opportunity to review them. I fully support the applicant's right to develop his property in a profitable manner. However, the applicant's team seems unwilling to compromise by addressing permanent library parking and entry and a plan amendment with a lower density and height. We do want density and commercial on this site, but this is too much. When the applicant purchased the site, he quickly informed the College Community Planning Board that he could by right build 28 four-bedroom apartments, which would eliminate the library parking and Montezuma Road entrance. Our only option for maintaining the library viability seemed to be to support his Community Plan Amendment to allow his proposal for a family-run franchised hotel. I was really disappointed when the applicant returned to propose this very high-density Community Plan Amendment that would allow more than 200 apartments plus density bonuses. We requested instead that he consider the next lower density, which would allow approximately 140 residential units with commercial. That is almost five times the number of units than when he bought the site. As Jan stated, the current parking agreement was based on a totally different project with evening hotel parking and does not work with the new proposal when residents can park there in the shared spaces 24/7. Through previously elected officials and staff who have been promoted or moved on, the city made many, many mistakes in the planning and development of this library. Now our new representatives and staff can do something to fix this predicament. I request that the Planning Commission approves the CPA, not, not, not approve the CPA as recommended by staff. They should, one, allow perhaps dense, very high-density Community Plan Amendment as opposed to the requested very-high-density Community Plan Amendment. Two, I think they, the Planning Commission should require permanent library parking and entrance solution prior to initiating the CPA. Short of this, the city will further exasperate the degradation of our library and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We have more hands that came up. So we have a total of four more speakers, or actually five more speakers. If the commission can hold out, we'll wait five more, no more, and we'll take a break. Or if you'd like a break now, just, just show by raise of hand. Looks like everyone's okay. So after the next, all the hands raised, we are letting everyone know, take a break. There are actually four speakers left to go, and starting with you, Nancy Schilling.
My name is Nancy Schilling, and I am a supporter of the College Rolando Library and would like to donate my time to the Friends of the Library.
Okay, thank you. Sylvia, and if you would give us your full name. Sylvia, are you there?
Chairman Hoffman, for some reason, I'm having difficulty allowing her to speak. It's giving me an air code. Can you move to Tom for a moment, please?
Yes, Tom Silva.
Thank you very much. I'm Tom Silva. I've been a resident of the community since 1986 and very supportive of the library, and I would like to cede my time to the formal opposition program or group.
Okay, thank you. Is Sylvia ready yet?
No, I apologize.
Not a problem. Okay, Mario Ingrassi. I butchered that, I'm sure.
Yes, thank you. Nice, Mario Ingrassi. I've been a resident in Rolando for about 20 years now, and my kids have grown, but they use the library, and it was, we, they really enjoyed it. Quickly, I, I don't, I think the higher density, and maybe this is too high, but it's not a bad idea. There should be more commercial there than what they're showing. If they're going to make, call it multi-use and have, have real, have real use there, not just another coffee shop, not just another gym for the, for the residents. But you definitely need to take care of the parking situation, anything. What we've had in our other buildings in the neighborhood, where there's, if it's geared towards college students, they're good, but I mean, we'd rather have permanent residents and college students, but they're okay. But they're going to park where they want to park. College students just, oh, I got to park someplace, and they're going to park there, whether they need to do that or go in the garage, wherever it's most convenient. We, that's from habit. That's what we've noticed in the rest of the neighborhood. So it needs to be a permit, more of a permit where the college people during the business hours, the college residents, I mean, the library residents have the priority of parking there. And one other thing is, when you get into the design of this building, seven stories of the whole site is not a good idea. Make it five or six at the most in the back, and make it an extra level hi- higher at the front along this boulevard. Tearst things off because there's houses on the back there, and they don't deserve a six, a seven-story building. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing, real fast. In the past, people have gotten approvals for two, for, for a number of units, and everything seems to be geared towards units. But when they, like the Bowe 63 was going to be a mixture of units, 400 units, when it got approved and started construction, every unit was four bedrooms. They changed it to four bedrooms. Now, I don't know if the city's changing or not. I've been complaining about this for 15 years, but you guys base all your fees, everything approvals, on unit numbers, not bedroom numbers. So when a project doubles or triples in the number of people living in, from what you approved, that's not good for the city. You're losing out on a lot of fees in addition to the impacts of the communities. So if you're going to approve some with a certain amount of units, make sure that the bedrooms don't change, because if it's geared towards college students and they can put four-bedroom units in there, that's what they're going to put. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Josh, Josh, if you can give us your full name.
Commissioner, Chairman Hoffman, for some reason, Josh and Sylvia, when I go to click on them, it says that they're using an older version of Zoom, and I'm not allow, it won't allow them to speak.
Okay. So Josh and Sylvia, we apologize for that. I'm going to try once and just, yep, I've got the, yeah, I get the same message. So Sylvia and Josh, I apologize that we can't hear you because of your Zoom version, so we'll have to skip over, and that those are the last speakers.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps a question to Sabrina. Are they able to call in?
Yeah, if they want to go ahead and call in, I'll,
Chairman Hoffman, possibly if you wanted to take a break to allow them to, to call in so that we could take that public testimony after the break.
Good idea.
Do you want to provide them the number to, to call in?
Sabrina, could you do that?
Yes, I will do that to them. Do you want me to do that while you're on the break?
No, go ahead and just give them the number now, and we can, yeah, let, we'll start our break. Go ahead, Sabrina.
You're going to start your break, or you're going to?
We're going to break until 10:55.
Okay, I will go ahead and speak with them and give them the phone number.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.